Twenty thirty P M. We'll call this session to order at two thirty P M. Start with an invocation. So Senator Coversup, you can open us up with the invocation.
Okay, oh.
All right, thank you. Start with roll call. Starting with Senator Prentice.
Prentice, Black Lodge.
Stewart, Black Lodge.
Other Medicine, Reno.
Kyle, Reno.
Always a lot of prayers.
Stewart, where do you feel? Alden, Berlin.
Go ahead, I don't touch that.
Oh, zero three. Realbert, not a few. Stewart, where do you feel?
Well, I was just a chap.
Shane, Reno. We give Senator Senator Prentice a chance to make a call. He couldn't help it. That gives us fourteen senators present. Like to welcome all the guests here this afternoon. We had officials earlier today, but they'll be here later. It takes us to review and adoption of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? If so, calling for a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion to adopt by Senator Stewart, second by Senator Alden. We have question.
Question.
Question by Senator Realbert. All those favor adopting the agenda, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All those abstaining, which carries with them vote fourteen zero zero supportive, asking or adopting the agenda. That takes us to new business. New business. First item on new business, A B O four. Entitled an act of amendment title twenty-one of the Crow Tribe Order Code by revising the Crow Tribe Gaming Ordinance. For organizers, Chairman of the Gaming Committee, Senator Realbert.
Speaker of the House, at this time, the gaming committees were basically done with the ordinance. We're gonna our legal is gonna polish up a little bit. So right now, we're back in the community to, I think to
But if I was the Secretary of the House, quite a clarification. The gaming ordinance amendment is actually old business, it's not new business. So actually, we don't have to address this today. So our actual first item of business should be the joint action. This should my right to Secretary of the House.
No, this would have been first order of business because of old business.
We're bringing it out of the committee, but at this point in time, we're leaving in the committee till tomorrow.
So we just need to amend the agenda.
All right. So at this time, we have to amend the agenda to put the gaming ordinance in old business then? Or?
No, gaming ordinance to the end of the business.
Okay, to the end. So I'm calling for a motion to amend the agenda and move the gaming ordinance to the end of business.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Senator Stewart, second by Senator Gozahed. Question by Senator Coversup. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Fourteen, all those opposed? All those abstaining. Motion carries with the vote of fourteen zero zero to move gaming ordinance to the end of the agenda, and we'll come out from old business. Not new business, but old business. Fourteen zero zero. That takes us to the next item, which would be new business. A joint action resolution entitled Resolution Approving the Crow Tribe's Limited Waiver of Sovereign Immunity in the Construction Contract for Phase Three of the Crow Tribe Water and Wastewater Improvement Project. At this time, the floor recognizes the Chairman of the Natural Resources and Infrastructure Committee, Senator Stewart.
Oh, Speaker, Secretary, members of the body and guests, I believe this is a resolution, joint action resolution introduced by the Absoilga Wastewater Authority. So, Mr. Speaker, at this time, I believe it's it's their time to read this into record or to adopt the agenda.
All right, at this time, we need a visiting appointee by the Chairman to read this into record. I believe, do we have Executive Legal Counsel here? Okay.
I believe we have a cabinet head right here.
The cabinet head?
Larry.
So Larry, so who is going to read this into record? Is it going to be Executive Legal Counsel or Cabinet Head? Because they're both pointing at each other. All right, the floor recognizes Larry Kindness, Cabinet Head, for the Executive Branch. At this time, floor recognizes Larry Kindness, Cabinet Head of the Executive Branch.
Good afternoon, members of the Legislative Branch, members of the community, our legal department, and whoever else is here today. Know the legal department. Executive and the Legislative Branch. Crow Tribe Legislature, February twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, special session. Joint action resolution number blank. Introduced by Darren O'Kyle, Chairman, Crow Tribe Executive Branch. Joint action resolution of the Crow Tribe Legislature and the Crow Tribe Executive Branch entitled The Resolution Approving the Crow Tribe's Limited Waiver of Sovereign Immunity in the Construction Contract for Phase Three of the Crow Tribe Water and Wastewater Improvement Project.
Motion to adopt by Senator Alden, second by Senator Hudson, proceed.
Whereas the Crow Tribes is prepared to begin the bid process for Phase Three of the Water and Wastewater Improvement Project in order to make critical infrastructure improvements for the community of Crow Agency, which includes both water main and sewer main replacement. And whereas Exhibit A and the supplementary conditions of the general condition of the construction contract for construction of Phase Three of the Water and Wastewater Improvements Project attached heretofore and incorporated by reference requires a limited waiver of sovereign immunity for the limited purpose of enforcing the owner's obligations under the construction contract. And whereas the Chairman of the Executive Branch has authority and responsibility pursuant to the enumerated powers in Article Five, Section Three of the Constitution and Bylaws of the Crow Tribe of Indians who represent the Crow Tribe in negotiation with federal, state, local governments and other agencies, corporations, associations, or individuals in matters of welfare affecting the Crow Tribe, and to negotiate limited waiver of sovereign immunity when such a waiver is necessary for business purposes in accordance with Article Four, Section Two F of the Constitution. And whereas the Legislative Branch has authority and responsibility pursuant to its powers and duties in Article Four, Section Two F of the Constitution to grant final approval or disapproval of limited waiver of sovereign immunity by the Executive Branch of Government when waivers are necessary for business purposes. And whereas the Crow Tribe and the community will greatly benefit from the infrastructure improvements for Phase Three of the Water and Wastewater Improvement Project and the limited waiver of sovereign immunity required by the contracting conditions for the construction contract is necessary for the business purpose of the construction in Phase Three of the Water and Wastewater Improvement Project. That's the body of the resolution.
Okay.
Continue on with the
Yes, continue on to the end of Section Two.
Now therefore be resolved by the Crow Tribe Legislature and the Crow Tribe Executive Branch. Section one, that the limited waiver of sovereign immunity set forth in Exhibit A and the supplementary supplementary conditions to the general conditions of the construction contract for the construction of Phase Three of the Water and Wastewater Improvements Projects attached heretofore and incorporated by reference is hereby approved. Section two, that the approval granted here is effective is effective on the date of approval of this resolution.
Thank you, now that brings us to the thirty-minute presentation. So now you can explain what you're trying to accomplish with the resolution today.
John, want to get up there and talk about that?
Uh, go ahead, you start off, and then I'll follow and give me all that.
Okay, well, in order, this project underway, which is about a year and a half or so overdue because of mitigating factors and legal matters in relation to the waiver of sovereign immunity and other rights of way and easement issues, it has taken too long actually to get to where we're at today. But, I mean, we're happy to get this thing going so we can employ additional people and make these additional improvements in the water and the wastewater infrastructure for the town of Crow Agency and for the people of the Crow Tribe. Whether they live here or not, everybody comes to Crow Agency to use our facilities and without also incorporate into these infrastructure projects and then projected this project out for fifty years down the road, and it will also incorporate the battlefield at some point in time on the south end of the town of Crow and also the west side of the town of Crow. John?
Floor recognizes John Doyle.
Good afternoon, members of the legislative body. I think all of you have been given a map, do you have that map? It pretty much identifies or lays out what the project will consist of, what Phase Three will consist of. When Phase Three is completed, a majority of the original town of Crow will have been rebuilt. Waste water lines, not all of the water lines, but the majority of the wastewater lines. And so as you can see, we're picking up some of the oldest parts of the system, which we wanted to do in the first phase initially. But because the area that we were working on, are gonna work on, which is right directly behind us here in the alley, it's probably one of the most difficult parts of this project. Because we're gonna change the water line, we're gonna put it out into the main street. We're gonna change the sewer line and how we connect each home to that service is gonna be complicated. But when it's finished, I mean, the original town of Crow will pretty much be finished. And like Larry quite a lot, we hope to be able to accomplish Phase Four, which is after this. And we wanted to incorporate it into this project, but weren't able to. But that's going to do mainly water lines. But it will also deal with the south end of the town, which will accommodate any economic development. And then the western railroad tracks. We're just starting on that, and that's probably as big a project as what we've done in Crow itself. And to date, the completion of Phase Four A, that'll be about twenty million dollars worth of work. And so the majority of that is grant money. And so, but we do need the loan component, and that's why we're here today is to try to get that issue resolved. And the limited waiver of sovereign immunity is just a requirement of the funding we can see, or a requirement to comply with. And we've done that twice already. I know there was questions raised this morning, but I believe our attorneys will be able to address that, your questions if you have with that. And if you have any questions of me about what we are hoping to do, then I'll try to answer.
All right, floor. No comments, no other comments, all right. Floor recognizes Chairman of the Infrastructure and Natural Resources Committee, Senator Stewart.
Okay, did you, are we out of the thirty-minute?
We're still in thirty-minute presentation. If there's no more comments or presentation.
It's time, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Speaker, I believe we can
I guess, one more comment for Speaker on part of the presentation part, that Executive Legal Counsel wants, wishes to make a statement, so
I'll use my time.
All right, floor recognizes Executive Legal Counsel, Bill Watt.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Secretary, members of the body and guests. It's a real honor to speak in favor of this project. That really is a unique benefit to Crow and very few towns have this kind of level of new infrastructure, they probably all need it. But it's not very glamorous work, but this is what makes it possible to have any economic development or even to sustain what we have now. I wanted to just try to answer any questions related to the limited waiver that is before you here. This waiver is, as I understand it, is intended to be contained in the construction contract for the for the Phase Four, is it, or Phase Three A W W A project. This was really developed several years ago on Phase One or Phase Two. And it's adapted very closely from the limited waiver that we provided First Interstate Bank in the various loans, operating loans. We had the Little Horn College loan. So it's patterned almost identically to those, except for it refers to the arbitration into the AAA's construction industry arbitration rules rather than their commercial arbitration rules. So it's adapted to this. You know, it provides for binding arbitration for any disputes between the tribe as owner and the contractor who's constructing the project. And again, to have any kind of dispute resolution or to enforce the contract with these multi-million dollar contracts, just has to be a way to enforce the agreement and to to some degree resolve disputes and also involve a limited waiver because there could be money involved in the resolution of the dispute. It provides again for binding arbitration. I know many of you are familiar with this. And then that arbitrator's award could be entered in the first instance in tribal court as a judgment to enforce it. And if the tribal court doesn't act, then it could be removed either to federal or state court simply to enter judgment on the arbitration award, not to redo it or review it or change it, but to enter judgment on it. The only other aspect of enforcement is, you know, to require the tribe to arbit, to actually go through the arbitration. So that's the only other instance where we need court action. Again, starting in tribal court, going off to the other forums if the tribal court doesn't act within sixty days, I believe. I think I recall working this out with some of the bonding companies for the original contractors that were interested in this project. Because they needed, and they insisted on having some kind of enforcement mechanism. So we used the bank waiver and worked it through that way and reviewed with them, and they were all comfortable with that, as I recall. It's been a while now. So I think this has been used before in this context. I understood and believe it had been reviewed with the Ad hoc Committee in previous times for the other phases of the project, and would be prepared to answer any other questions you may have on the waiver. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we're still in thirty-minute presentation. There are no more comments at this time. The floor will ask Chairman of the Natural Resources and Infrastructure Committee to make his recommendation at this time for approval or disapproval. The floor recognize Senator Stewart.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, members of the body and via guests as well as legal, executive legal and Absoilga Wastewater Authority. We had a meeting this morning, and in that meeting, we went ahead and we adopted it to the the agenda for the committee, and we had discussion concerning these areas, and there was a thought and discussion surrounding the the waiver of sovereign immunity. And so I did state that I will make that note when I make my recommendation. And that when we come to that point on the, on the agenda, that, a discussion that the, the issues concerning the sovereign immunity can be raised at that time, and maybe further clarification from both legal. So that's something that I did make note in the committee that we're gonna make those, make that prior to my recommendation, that I was gonna bring that out on the floor, that we were gonna, that was the question, so. At this time, I asked for a recommendation for approval, and there were six members present at the meeting. Senator Other Medicine made the motion. It was seconded by Senator Gerald Stewart from Wayola, Mighty Few District. And question was called by Senator Kyle Runz, with a six yes, zero no, zero abstain. And my recommendation is for the approval of this resolution.
Thank you. That takes us to debate. At this time, if there is any debate on the proposed legislation. I believe in-house counsel for Legislative Branch had a question, so the floor recognize him at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, members of the Legislative Branch, representatives from the Executive Branch, Bill Watt, Donald Labeter, members of General Counsel in attendance, and watching across the world. The question I've got, Mr. Speaker, was following Bill's presentation, I did miss the committee review. I was with the gaming committee earlier today, and this is just for our understanding, whenever the tribe waves a sovereign immunity, per the policy established by this branch, we want to make sure that there's a comprehensive view and a policy discussion about what the waiver entails and those basic attributes of a waiver of sovereign immunity. Bill went through, talked about the limited nature, terms of arbitration and its enforcement process. We've got tribal court as a judicial forum for enforcement, that's very good. That's not often a provision, especially if we're dealing with the state of Montana. That's in these limited waivers, however, I think it's important for every legislator to understand that we are under the terms of this proposed waiver, subjecting the Crow Tribe to the application of Montana state law. And I do have some concern about that. I know this is a negotiated waiver, but I don't know that that, because this isn't with a private company, there's no standard that needs to be met other than what you feel is in your judgment is the best interest of the tribe. I would certainly question the best interests being reflected in the application of state law governing a dispute arising under this contract. So if Bill could offer insight, or anybody present, as to whether that was a non-negotiable term, that the Absoilga Water and Wastewater Authority would not have had the ability to continue negotiating with this company if they weren't agreeing to accept the application of state law. I'm not speaking disparagingly about Montana state law, but we have tribal law that should be followed first and foremost. That's why we're here, as a legislature. So if Bill could offer any insight on to, as to the choice of law provision in this limits waiver, I guess, Mr. Speaker, I would note as well, I think probably most people would understand that this construction contract we have is not a part of the resolution, but the exhibit is, it's referenced in the resolution, and it might be an area of confusion, it certainly kind of caught me off guard. This construction contract, which we received yesterday, is itself, or excuse me, Exhibit Eight is part of that construction contract, but the construction contract is not part of the resolution, only the limited waiver provision. Maybe that's more of an in-house concern more than anything, just with regard to establishing what is going to be in the legislative record. And if the body chose to, we could put this whole construction contract in the legislative record, although it isn't technically part of the resolution. But, Mr. Speaker, that was my question for the Executive Branch, and whoever would be able to answer the question. And that's the application of state law that governs disputes arising under the contract.
All right, before you go any further, Senator Stewart, I'm gonna answer one question there for in-house legal. Mr. Harris, I believe it's up to the committee chair, what should be part of the resolution. When he speaks to his committee, if they believe they need, whatever they need is, needs to be in the resolution, will be in the resolution. But I think it's up to the committee, with the committee chair, to come up with that. So at this time, floor recognize Senator Stewart.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, members, at this time, what we did discuss during the committee was that the maps and the breakdown of the dollars were gonna be part of the, part of the record on the, as a detachment. And I have them here. There's the maps here that are in color, everything that's gonna be constructed during this, during this schedule. There's Schedule One for Sewer Water, Schedule Two Sewer and Sewer, this is B I A, Schedule Three Water E P A, T S A, and so forth, and it goes all the way to Schedule Five. And again, for the bodies, you know, And again, for the bodies, you know, say that we got work covered by contract A and it has a breakdown of everything that, and that was recognized for the record for the committee, and John Doyle did that, and work covered by contract B, so that wasn't included. And we have that in here for our record and we included it for our, our records here for the, and as well as the, the, the language here that, that Bill had brought, sent over to the, to the branch, and that was concerning the supplementary conditions to the general conditions, and it's the index supplementary conditions to the general conditions and goes so forth, and it has the index of everything included, so. And we also, we also have included in all of that is, uh, a breakdown of, of all the monies that are included in, in this and showing the schedules on the bottom, so everything, everything is, um, brought out in the light here and all the amounts and where we need to be on this. And what I wanted to do, Mr. Speaker, read this real quick, I know the question was, you know, jurisdictions and, and so forth, but under, um, and we had talked with, um, Senator Not Afraid from the Bicorne District was in attendance in the meeting, so he was asking questions concerning that as well. Under one point two judicial proceedings, part A, it says, "A party may commence court proceedings, judicial proceedings only to compel the only party to participate in arbitration proceedings or to enforce an arbitration award. All judicial proceedings conducted pursuant to exhibit A shall be initially commenced in Crow Tribal Court. Any judicial proceedings conducted in tribal court shall be conducted in accordance with the substantive law of the Federal Arbitration Act and the procedural law of the Crow Tribal Court, to the extent that such procedural law is not inconsistent with the Federal Arbitration Act and the procedure is expressly provided herein. Part B, in the event that the Crow Tribal Court refuses to compel a party to participate in arbitration proceedings or to enforce an arbitration award as written, or fails to perform such functions within sixty days after commencement of judicial proceedings or such further time as the parties may mutually agree, either party may transfer, remove the judicial proceedings from Crow Tribal Court to the United States District Court for the District, for the District of Montana, or if it's, if it lacks jurisdiction to the Montana Twenty Second Judicial District Court for Bicorne County, Montana. Removal judicial proceedings from Crow Tribal Court may be accomplished by filing a notice of removal in Crow Tribal Court and filing an appropriate application in the appropriate federal or state court, the deciding forum. In accordance with the procedural rules of that forum, the notice of removal and application need to be executed on behalf of only the removing party, and such removing shall not be opposed or contested by the other party. Upon removal, all proceedings in Crow Tribal Court shall be stayed pending final resolution in the deciding forum, and all travel remedies shall be deemed exhausted upon final resolution of the matter. The order or judgment of the deciding forum may be entered into Crow Tribal Court. D, the parties waive any, any rights to pursue judicial proceedings related to the contract in any court except as provided in this exhibit A." And exhibit A is Crow Tribal Court. So Crow Tribal Court has the first lead on this, and if they fail within sixty days, then if it's a non-membered company, they could take us to outside jurisdiction.
All right, we're still at the debate portion for those legislation. And there's no more debate, going once. Before I organize, Senator Alden of the Bicorne District.
I can motion to cease debate. Wave second reading, move on, final roll call vote.
Point of order?
Before I organize, Senator Stewart.
Um, before we get there, I wanted to make this record to the secretary as, um, attachment. I know I read it for the record, but I wanna recognize that these, these pieces are gonna be part of the record as attachments to the resolution.
Along with attachments, along with attachments we came. So for point of clarification, we have the contract for the construction.
For point of clarification, Mr. Speaker, I have the phase three wastewater and water improvements project summary of work covered by contract A and B, and I have the map from Morrison Marley, and I also have the supplement, supplementary conditions to the general conditions and all the index and everything included, and I have, I have the, um, I have the project budget for phase three wastewater collection system improvement project in Crow Agency and the timeframe and breakdown by dollar amount and by timeframe.
Before I organize, Secretary of the House.
That would be in the form of an amendment, uh, Mr. Stewart, or Senator Stewart, that way it would be added on with amendment portion.
Thank you. So that brings us to the amendments. So do we call for a motion to amend, to add these? All right.
Point of order?
Before I organize, Senator goes ahead.
Uh, Senator Alden has to, uh, withdraw his motion in order to go to the amendments because he already made a motion.
Second reading.
Okay.
Attachments, so. Before I recognize, Senator Alden.
Hold that route, I'll withdraw my motion, then, once you get the amendments, then.
Okay. At this time, before I organize, Senator Stewart.
At this time, Mr. Speaker, Secretary members of the body, I want to submit this for the record as an amendment, an attachment to the resolution.
Second.
Seconded by Senator, goes ahead. Questions, question by Senator Real Bird. All those in favor of the motion, second, question to accept these attachments as amendments, which would be the map?
The map, the budget.
Project summary. The contracts and the budget. Those four items will be part of the attachment. With those four attachments, all those in favor of the four attachments as an amendment, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion carries with a vote of fourteen yes, zero opposed and zero abstained. And that brings us to the motion by Senator Alden, which was retracted earlier. Do you wish to make your motion, Senator?
All right, let's try this again. Motion to cease debate, moving the final roll call vote along with amendments.
Second.
We have a motion to wave second reading, am I correct? Okay, I read your mind. Motion to wave second reading. With amendments and attachments, seconded by Senator Stewart. Question by Senator Real Bird. All those in favor of waiving the second reading, going to final roll call vote, and with amendments, with attachments, raise your right hand.
Point of order?
Before I organize, Secretary of the House.
I hear the point of clarification, he said motion to cease debate. Did you mean to cease amendments? Because debate was already ceased. I, we're at amendment stage.
That's correct. Correct.
This point of clarification, okay, point of clarification. Before I organize, Senator goes ahead, do you have?
Yes, so all he, all he needs to do is just withdraw and start over again.
No, it'd be just a point of clarification. It'd be just a point of clarification, that was, it was a motion to cease amendments, not debates, that's all he needs to make that statement.
Okay. So his motion, that's why I asked him to cease, to cease his amendments, but to also to waive second reading and go to final roll call vote with amendments, with attachments. And everybody voted, voted on, on that, and that was a vote of, oh, we didn't vote yet. So all those in favor of the motion and the second, which is to wave second reading with amendments and attachments, raise your right hand. And we will go into final roll call vote. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Motion carries with a vote of fourteen yes, zero no, zero abstain. To wave second reading with amendments and go to final roll call vote. So at this time, we will start with our final roll call vote with Senator Pritik.
Pritik, Black Lodge, yes.
Stewart, Black Lodge, yes.
Other medicine, Reno, yes.
Kaya Branch, Reno, yes.
Olden Black, yes.
Alden Bigorn, yes.
Bigorn, yes.
DeKray, Arrow Creek, yes.
Goes ahead. Arrow Creek, yes.
Arrow Creek, yes. Real Bird Mighty Few, yes. Stewart, Mighty Few, yes.
Old Crow, yes.
Shane Reno, yes. With a vote of fourteen, yes, zero, no, zero abstain. Bill passes with a vote of fourteen, zero, zero. Floor recognizes Senator Stewart, Chairman of Infrastructure Committee.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, Secretary members, I just wanted to thank everybody for the vote and, um, it's time, I don't know if these guys wanna say something. I know they've been working pretty hard on this, this is only the second loan that, that they've ever went after concerning this project, and everything else has been achieved by grants. And we, I kinda tease these guys all the time, it's that they got, the Songa Waste Water Authority has all the authority on the reservation, but they have no money. Water Resources has all the money but no authority. So we gotta somehow merge these guys, you know, in there. So I wanna give my time to these guys, give them a chance.
All right, before I recognizes John Doyle.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody here for that support. Uh, like Larry pointed out, we've been a year trying to get to today, and, uh, we've kinda reached a point where we're in danger of losing some of those dollars. And, uh, hopefully by the end of this month, by March twenty eighth, we'll have a contractor selected, either, uh, tribal or non-travel, meaning, uh, a different tribe. We're doing that pre-qualification process now, and we'll know by the end of this month whether there's an Indian qualified, uh, contractor. If not, then we go publicly and advertise throughout the state, more in line with the country. And, uh, hopefully we'll be under construction by, in sometime in May, there's a little bit of a timing error, so, um, the, the main street's gonna be tore up at some point, and hopefully we can schedule that so that it's not a busy time for, for the community. But there's gonna be, uh, a lot of activity, and so we're anxious to get it going. I don't know if anybody's really paid attention, but we don't have odor in our town anymore because the new lagoon is functioning. And, uh, when we get the UV part installed and wastewater treatment, that water will, won't add to the pollution that's in a little bit of it right now. So there's a lot of good things that will come of it and, you know, I'm just happy and thankful for all of you guys participating and helping us, thank you.
Any more comments? The floor recognizes cabinet head Larry Kleines.
Thank you, uh, honorable senators, for the passage of this bill here. And this is gonna speed up the process now where we can get out to bid. We have a two-tier bidding system, and the first system is, is the Indian preference. And we're sending out an RFQ, our request for qualifications for, uh, Indian bidders that they're bondable, we want a bondable project, if something goes wrong, then they pay for it, not us, as the owners. And so there, there's certain qualifications that they have to meet. What we're trying to weed out also is Indian friends, which, you know, since, uh, since they started the Indian preference thing, there's a lot of Indian guys and women that are just friends for white companies, and so this is one of the things, and a way to weed them out, so. So if we don't have any qualified Indian construction firms, then we'll go to an open bid process, and this is a speedy process, it costs thirty-eight thousand dollars just to get through the bid process, which is taken away from our construction money, but it's just something that we have to do and get done. So thank you for your vote of confidence this afternoon.
Oh, all right, thank you. At this time, this brings us to, I talked with the Secretary of the House earlier, we said we were gonna just go through, uh, to the first two items of the agenda, we still have to, uh, look at other items for tomorrow, so at this time, we'll be calling for a recess. Before I organize, Secretary of the House.
I wanted to make a motion to amend the agenda, as you see on the cover, it says March fifth, doesn't include March the sixth, Wednesday, so I wanted to make an amendment to the agenda to include that on the agenda.
All right, so we got a motion on the floor by Secretary of the House for a motion to add March sixth, second by Senator Covers Up.
Amendment.
To the agenda, so this is a, the amendment for our special session to continue on until tomorrow. Do we have a question? Question by Senator Goes Ahead, all those in favor of continuing with a special session by adding March sixth, Wednesday for a special session, raise your right hand. Okay, so it's just amending the agenda. Who was the total there? Fourteen. With a vote of fourteen, we will continue on tomorrow. Second by Senator Covers Up, question by Senator Goes Ahead. So we will recess until tomorrow and continue tomorrow at ten o'clock. Before I recognize, Senator Goes Ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and this is, uh, addressing the body. Get here on time. You know, we need to, now, again, the old speech, David, you guys are making twenty-five bucks an hour, and there's no excuse for any of us. We late, because I worked hard at it, I'm gonna, I'm talking about myself, I worked hard at it to get to this, to make twenty-five bucks an hour. And it doesn't look, we collectively, we're late and we don't get here early, that makes me look bad, that makes the branch look bad. So this is business. This is your primary livelihood, Kadejewi Agar. I'm gonna share something with the body that CJ sometimes works at the mine, gets about three hours of sleep and comes to his meetings. He always gives sight, he always take his sight, I don't, so I'm just using him as an example, so we don't got no excuse. This is your primary job. It's not a big deal, because outside are talking that you're not here. Come to your meetings. I'm chairing, and he's also chairing a couple committees. I've been here and I see a lot of things, and we can't go on like this. There were times I would be in here, I'd be pretty upset and I would keep it to myself. They, we don't have no excuse. The executive branch is already here waiting on us to get a quorum. We can't have that anymore. We gotta be here and get business done. These guys, we let, I don't like, I don't like to let people wait. You, I try to put my shoes, feet in their shoes, so you. You, I try to put my shoes, feet in their shoes, so you, I work pretty hard at getting this twenty-five bucks an hour. That's quite a bit of money. It's right now, I'm saying all this on, 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 on that, a lot of people are going to be looking at this. And, so, if you can't wake up in the morning, or shea, you, we're getting these economic developments and, and being on time and getting the business done.
Thank you, Senator Gozahead. So we'll be on recess until tomorrow, ten o'clock, ten o'clock. We'll get started. Before we organize Senator Realbird.
We're going to meet on the gaming here in about ten minutes, so you guys can stick around.
All right. All right, so after recess, there'll be a Gaming Committee meeting here in a few minutes, so anyone interested here that wants to stay for the gaming, Chairman of the Gaming Committee is asking that, you participate in the Gaming Committee meeting. So we'll see you at ten o'clock tomorrow, we'll be on recess, and we'll go right into the Gaming Committee.